Okay, ready?
Well, the October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five meeting of the Delta Township Planning Commission to order. Everyone, please rise for the belligerent allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the principle with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Secretary, if you'd call roll.
Yes, we'll call. Chairman Kaczynski.
Here.
Vice Chair Proctor.
Present.
Secretary Weldon present. Wendy Bradley. Mike Medow.
Present.
Present. Mark Woodrey.
Present.
Bob McConnell.
Present.
Rachel Lozinga. David Howell.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move, approve of the agenda.
Support. Moved and supported, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The agenda is approved. Do we have anybody here from the public for comments for anything not on the agenda? It would appear not. So we'll move into the principal purpose of this meeting, which is a work session to review and discuss uh the development of a new township master plan. So Peter, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you. All right, appreciate everyone being here tonight. Uh, we did a work session purposely. I mean, the meeting is not going to be that different from a regular meeting outside of the title of the meeting. We still are hosting it on uh the web. If not for anyone signing in and watching it live, which doesn't really appear to happen that often um for posterity to have for other people that may want to kind of understand some of the conversations that happened tonight. And also so we can help helps us facilitate doing the minutes. So it's nice to have it online either way. Um, so tonight was intended to review three specific documents. We have a draft future land use map categories list. So that I just want to go over this. That should be the list that says draft future land use categories. Everyone should have your digital or paper copy in front of them. Confirm that. So um we'll talk about that. That kind of sets the stage for the plan. And then we have the map itself, the future land use map. That is the the best way to look at that is the digital copy. It is hard to discern a printed copy. I did hand out a printed copy of the existing the future land use map from twenty thirteen, and this is just to provide some background. More for reference if we need to go back to what were the folks thinking in twenty twelve or whenever the conversations happened ahead of that um plan. However, I don't want to get too bogged down in the past. It's been a long time since twenty thirteen. A lot of so much has changed. So um I wanted to have that just for reference, but we really want to go into this plan based on more today's facts. And then uh over the next few meetings, the results of the public input that our uh O H M advisors consultant collected. And then the last thing, our draft goals and agendas, or excuse me, goals and objectives. So this is its titled vision and objective statements. There should be there there are several pages. If anyone knew its copy, just let me know. That are those are the draft uh goals and objectives for the for the plan. So it's broken down into I think five or six different categories. There's a statement like a policy vision statement, and then there's objectives under each one. So what I was hoping to do today was to run through those documents. They are, I kind of thought long and hard about like philosophically how to tackle this stuff. Typically, the planning commission, at least since I've been on staff, have tackled requests. So very specific kind of things.
Let's have a process question, Mr. Chair. Peter, you sent out um so many documents today?
Last week with the meeting pack that went out, I think last Thursday. No. I didn't send anything out today. I sent a link out to participate in the exercises that were from the master plan meeting last week or both the fifteen.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, my question was um is our participation here in lieu of input on those other documents?
I don't think it's in lieu of. I think it would be supplemental to. So the link I if anyone hasn't checked their email yet today, I sent a link out to the consultant has set up a project page for us. Um, I don't have access to the background of it, but we have that. I I just have the link, the the same link that you all have. I don't control the page. Just want to establish that. But the consultant has the page set up. They have the boards that were posted around the room. So on October fifteenth, if you ever were here, we had this room looking a lot different. There were boards set up along the perimeter perimeter of the space. There were stations kind of, I'll call them exercises at each um location. There was an opportunity to kind of look at what was going on. So like the future land use map was set up. The some of these boards, the vision statements were set up, and there were opportunities for people to comment on them. Comment being in the form of taking a sticky note writing on it and posting it, which is fairly typical at events like that. And so that the that a versatile, virtual, digital version of that exercise or all the exercises that happened that night are now on the planning, the page I sent the link to earlier. So please go on and you can provide feedback that way. It's anonymous. You can type as much or as little or not participate. I was hoping today would be more of a group discussion about the elements of these documents here. And if you also want to go on and provide, you know, more input on the website where you have more time to think about it, kind of pen however you want to say it, feel free. We will also be taking notes tonight.
Okay.
It's just general feedback notes because I didn't think we'd really come to a conclusion on all the stuff this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So the reason I don't remember where exactly I was at, but the reason we scheduled is a work session was one to illustrate to the public that this is a work in progress. I didn't want anyone to get the wrong impression that we were making some sort of decision tonight. And I also wanted to relieve anyone of pressure that there was some big grand decision that needs to be made tonight. We are much further down the road on the master plan than we were the last time this group has met. July, August, September were big things. Um, we had the, you know, the open house in August. We did three focus groups with a couple of different group um community groups around the area. We have had internally some documents, a couple of draft chapters were released to the steering committee. And then in the last couple of weeks, the three documents that are on the agenda tonight came out, and they are big documents that need a lot of feedback. The work center, the public meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago, the intent behind that was to start to get the public's input on it. Um, and then from there, we are working, the staff has comments. I'm sure playing commission has more comments. And ultimately, we want to get all those to the consultant team and start to drill down on these and make some edits so that so can land on some documents that we're all comfortable with. So any questions kind of just about the scope of what tonight was intended to do? Just kind of provide some high level feedback on some of these documents. I was envisioning maybe a, you know, we'll run through all of them. I know we have limited time. Everybody wants to go home. Um, but we'll run through each of them. We can kind of show you what our team has come up with so far, just some of the items that we think are either worthy of more discussion or just to kind of take your temperature on what we've identified. And then I was envisioning um another steering committee meeting with or without the consultant, possibly without of a smaller subset of this group. Um, whether you're on the original steering committee or not, maybe you want to join the conversation. And we can have a more granular discussion, particularly about the master plan, because it is so parcel by parcel. It's just hard to cover, you know, many square miles and overhead, you know, over overhead overview. So um please keep that in mind, like how you how you want to continue this discussion as we move, but I was not in envisioning kind of putting a ribbon on this by the end of the evening. Other, we will not get out of here anytime soon if that if that's the scope. So um if everyone is comfortable with that, we're just going to plow ahead and get into the categories. So there are, I think, one, two, three, four, five broad categories for the vision and objective statements. Oh, I'm on the wrong one. See, we're already off to the wrong. There's the I've got only got forty copies. Okay, there we go. I think there are fourteen of these categories for land use. So the the categories are what how land will be classified in the future land use map. So what we have in front of us right now is the consultant's proposal for the categories. Uh, this is um with all due respect to the consultant, this is not a knock on them at all. I'm using this uh as I think that we should consider this as a starting point. So if they are based on some feedback from the public, but this is the first time the public has seen these. So it's hard and they haven't really been vetted by everybody, and um this is our opportunity to kind of chime in on this. So they can, this can be edited is as my is my primary point. So I'll just start at the top. Um, it starts with our residential and it moves into industrial and some other things. So okay, starting with agriculture, there are four categories on the front page. Agricultural, rural, preserve, suburban estate, and suburban cluster. I don't know if anyone has had a chance to read through these. My initial feedback on this is that I think there's too many on on the on the first page here. So this is describing, and the next page starts conventional neighborhood and traditional neighborhood. So really, the first page is kind of is attempting to classify some of these properties in the southwest corner or western corner, some in the northwest corner. Larger, larger lots, mostly rural semi rural development. There are some neighborhoods in those areas. A lot of them are more um like planned unit developments that they're tighter knit. Think of the Village Place development on West Saginaw Highway. Um, as you go out towards Grand Ledge, closer knit like cluster developments. So I think the challenge is here is how do we organize this into some categories that makes sense? My, like I said, my initial feedback is there are are four here where I think there could be two. So what we had talked about internally, and then these are just discussing points just to try to spur conversation on this. So what I like to do is try to propose something and then a list of feedback on it. It's not intended to like, this is what I think we should do. It's more, here's a starting point and let's have a conversation about it. So what we had talked about internally was incorporating, using the rural preserve to um capture agriculture and using suburban estates to capture suburban clusters. So that gives us two categories, rural preserve and suburban estate. Personally, I think that captures rather well most of the rural, you know, green filled areas in the township. They either fall under rural preserve. The consultant has a description about rural preserve is. And then the suburban estates kind of captures everything else because suburban clusters are within suburban estates. I think of suburban states and the way they describe it are these larger residential lots, like generally one acre or more in size. They're located within the urban service boundaries, so they get utilities. Um, they're low density neighborhoods, preserve natural features and open space. It preserves the semi rural rural character of those areas. To me, the rural preserve and agriculture are kind of the same thing. So if it makes sense, I was, I would say the rural preserve can incorporate agriculture within it. Um, and then we would just change the definition of rural preserve, maybe use language from both of those to kind of come up with a new category that better describes both both uses.
Um, Mr. Chair, should I direct my comments to you or to Peter?
Uh, I'll just address them directly to Peter.
Okay, um, if I may, uh, the abbreviation for agriculture, it's A on the draft land use uh categories, but on the map um it's A G. So just for housekeeping purposes, I don't know, you know, what that is. I don't even know if it's meaningful um if those categories are combined, but um, two comments about that. Number one, um, there is a big difference between agricultural and rural preserve, and that is the agricultural, they're actually doing farming. And the rural preserve, um, those are homeowners, um, you know, that have that have land that's that's not being used um, you know, for for agricultural purposes. Um, the second thing is that I have a question about agricultural land that has a twenty five year variance on it. And whether or not it should still be counted as agricultural. Um, because this is a ten year master plan. If something has a twenty five year variance, it's going to be used for the purpose that it's being used for right now. So in terms of the solar farms, for instance, that are out in the agricultural area, um, I would consider those to be industrial because uh those those areas have eight foot fence around them and they're just solid, solid solar panels. So uh in terms of, you know, coloring or zoning or or whatever, um, I just think that there ought to be, you know, a clear designation about something that has a twenty five year variance and is going to be used for that purpose for twenty five years. Then we have a ten year, we're only looking ten years um into the future. Um, you want my comments about anything else on that first page?
Well, um, or just up to you guys, how you want to tackle this. I I I mean, I think it might be easier if we do kind of one eye, one issue at a time. Good.
Peter, I I mean, I agree with your assessment that as I as I read them, I found them to be so similar as to not be different. So I I think with some wordsmithing, you can get where you where we would like to be and have fewer.
So anyone else have thoughts about combining the categories?
I, yeah, I didn't consider combining categories. But I did have the observation that it seemed to be too many in terms of the manageability of it. And possibly some consolidation would make sense.
It'd be intense not to obscure the the fact that we have farms. It just seems like the category is an easy. You know, it's just more of an efficient description that agriculture is within rural preserve. There are some farms that are just solely farms, but there are also many properties that are homes with farms. And I think rural preserve kind of captures both of them. We're preserving the the property that the homeowner owns and and as well as the farm. It's in a rural area, it's being preserved, whether it's a home or it's an agriculture. We have, I guess, there's nothing stopping us from designating just the farm areas as agriculture. But in terms of identifying this rural preserve, it makes sense to me to incorporate the two, but.
Yeah, I guess the only comment I would make is we have to proceed kind of carefully when we consolidate the language. Uh, thinking particularly the specification of agricultural land is twenty acres or more. Uh, not sure that's applicable to what they view as rural preserve. Uh, so I just think we'll have to be careful in our our language and decide, do we really want to be inclusive up to that that point for rural preserve?
Well, I think where they got twenty acres and the two acres is from our own zoning district. So A G one would be a twenty acre. It's essentially the three second, the southwest sections um of the township. And then A G one would be two acre minimum.
Right.
So even in the agricultural definition that talks about the twenty acre farm, but also says that two acres more for large lot residential parcels. So I I can see your point, but I think they're they're already combining the two anyways regarding size. And I think when when we met as a staff, there was also more talking about, you know, low density residential, suburban residential and higher density residential. I think that's where our point was for word preserve is that that's going to be the name for the for a low density residential, which could include active farmland. It could include um, you know, lots that are two acres, large homes, stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think in order to put it beyond, I don't disagree. I just think what we do when this is put out for public consumption, uh, we need to have something in there that explains the consultant and the township's thinking on combining those things because somebody's going to ask, well, those are different. That why are you putting them together? And I think we just need to explain it. It'll save us trouble down the line in terms of confusion.
Well, don't we also have to be careful about how this is worded may have trickle down effects on other ordinances that we have, right? I'm thinking of the the weed, not just weed ordinance, for example, there's a residential and there's an agriculture a component of that. And that may when I when I read rural preserve and it talks about homes and lots of certain sizes, I think of mowing, but agriculture. Uh, you can kind of get away with not mowing. Um, so just the trickle down effect too of how we word things.
Yeah, I mean, just generally, the master plan is not really going to have too many policy implications. It's more of a guiding document for our team. The biggest use that comes into play, I mean, not, I don't want, this is not a useless endeavor by any stretch. But it's, I mean, it's part of the bigger picture is community conversation about land use. Ultimately, there are policies that may stem out of this, but in terms of like referring to something in an ordinance, I wouldn't think, I mean, the master plan will never be the go to kind of arbiter of whether or not
Good, good.
weed ordinance is applied in one way or another.
Good, good.
So any strong opposition, I guess, maybe let's let's take it from that. Any strong opposition to preserving the two at least agriculture rural preserve for now, and we can talk about what that looks like. Maybe it's a new heading that's rural preserve and agriculture, and it's all one category. And then wordsmithing a new definition that that incorporates both. The other, I mean, similar take on the last two here, suburban estate and suburban cluster. Um, I I mean, I think this generally describes these larger estates in the township, the consultant calls them um one acre, one acre more in size. They, uh, we won't be over this tonight. Uh, low density neighborhoods. Protecting existing development pattern, preserving semi rural character. So the thought here was suburban cluster is a type of development within suburban estates. So suburban estates, I mean, again, you could probably make an argument with semantics that these are all very, very similar in any scenario. But if we want to make the definite, the distinction between what are like a more rural property versus more of a suburban property is we're still talking large lots in a rural area. Uh, and then the suburban cluster is a type of development that would fit into suburban estate. So suburban estates are both kind of that property that's been broken off from a larger farm many years ago, as well as a development that is comprised of those types of parcels. So again, I'll look back to um, there are some neighborhoods that that are good examples of this. But it just seems like they're kind of saying the same thing. And the effort is really just to kind of reduce the number of categories that we have. These two seem like a good fit. So incorporating suburban cluster into suburban estates.
Can I mention something, Peter?
Please.
Um, in your definition of suburban cluster, um, it talks about um suburban family homes. And in the multifamily um residential, it talks about townhomes and condominiums. Um, and it kind of combines apartments in there too. And I just see kind of a difference there because townhomes and condominiums, um, those are property owners and the um apartments are renters. So my question or my suggestion anyway, in suburban cluster, whatever definition you're going to wind up with, whether or not to include townhomes and condominiums in that definition and take that out of the multifamily uh residential definition.
I guess the only thing, I mean, townhomes and condos can be rented depending on uh, the the product. I mean, single family home, just to be clear, single family homes can also be rented.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know that the distinction between rental and owned. I kind, I'm casting this forward to what master plan primarily impacts, which are zoning decisions and that sort of thing. And I've never known rental versus ownership uh to be pertinent to a zoning decision and more has to do with structure density, all those kinds of issues. So I don't think combining them together or throwing the condos in with the apartments is a problem. Physically, they can be very similar structures, which to me is more of a concern.
So you want to have any thoughts on the combination of suburban estates and suburban clusters into a new category that incorporates a little bit of both? Yeah, what we're seeing is a suburban cluster being a type of development without within suburban estates and just incorporating that right in.
Is the main factor or one of the main factors that they're both located within the urban services boundary? And rural preserve and agriculture as listed on here are outside
That's
of the urban services.
Yeah, if I, yeah, that's one definite, one does uh distinction for sure.
Can I just ask a class question for clarification? The comments that you have, did you submit those prior to Peter? Because I saw on your email, you asked that things be submitted if they had questions or concerns.
Yeah, no, so I'm sorry if I was, I'm sorry if this was confusing. I sent the link out ju- just as an opportunity for anyone that missed the meeting a couple of weeks ago to provide comment. Maybe maybe that could have been people that weren't here tonight, but just in general. Not everybody wants to make comments in public and have a broad policy discussion out loud. So that's your opportunity to chime in on that stuff. That does not replace supplement or anything our conversation tonight. So if they do not, like David's comments do not need to be submitted to the portal. He certainly can as an individual submit that, and I I don't even think there's a limit on it. You could probably submit it ten times if you wanted to. Um, but that, yeah, you don't, you don't have to submit them to to anybody if you don't want to. But that would be a way, just for the, I mean, just to clarify, if you're having a conversation, you feel differently from your colleagues on the playing commission. One way to make that clear is to submit that directly to the consultant page.
Mr. Chair, if I can respond to that, I thought about putting all my comments together and sending them directly to Peter, but I wanted to share them with the other members of the planning commission. And that's why I decided to bring it to this forum instead of sending them individually to Peter.
Cool. All right, we made it through page one. So um, we don't have a lot of other changes for this. So number pay on the top of page two is conventional neighborhood. That's followed by traditional neighborhood. These are two different takes on single family neighborhoods. They seem to pretty accurately describe um two different types of developments in this community. So conventional neighborhood, and we just don't have a good um, I don't, Dave, I don't know if you want to pull up a map of some like some examples as we go through this. But conventional neighborhoods, I think, are um exemplify pretty well in multiple areas throughout the township. We were talking initially about some neighborhoods off of Willow. They're kind of a little bit larger lots, but they're still, you know, kind of your typical suburban subdivision neighborhoods. Traditional neighborhood, the primary difference being either your smaller neighborhoods. Um, they are more closely um located to commercial. They have smaller lots. And we're, you know, I think that's one of the challenges is that's it's there are nuances to all of this. So it's not, there is no right answer to all these things. We're just trying to describe some of the neighborhoods. So Dave, this is an example of kind of conventional.
Uh, this would be a traditional, right? Yeah, this is um Village Place. So larger about forty foot lot west houses are closer together. Um, you know, in Delta Township, it would also be Um, you know, in Delta Township, it would also be kind of the neighborhood. Um, south of Saginaw in the Waverly area where Peter calls the names neighborhood. Uh, you know, those houses have been there since the forties and fifties.
Yeah, I mean, I would just hesitate to throw, uh. A dig into the distinction on those that could create massive confusion, obviously within those neighborhoods. You could have houses side by side, one of which was listed as a traditional neighborhood and the other they were built a year apart. Uh, I just think it's kind of an arbitrary thing, so I would.
Fair.
Drop them all together, I mean.
So we were comfortable with these categories. I feel like they described two fairly distinct types of housing developments and, and Delta. Um, and we're proposing just to keep them. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts to the contrary. Okay, we'll move on to multifamily at the bottom of page two. So I mean, that's pretty self explanatory, typically captures all kinds of multifamily housing types. So, um, they are, you know, higher density and multifamily takes a, a lot of different looks. And this, I think accurately describes. Kind of all the different things that might fall into this.
Would workforce housing fall into multifamily residential?
It could. I could see workforce housing kind of be in any of these. It's more about. Because when I think of workforce housing personally, I'm just talking for myself. It's more of a, I mean, it's a. They're typically associated with some kind of either state or local aid, um, that are provided, you know, the in- income qualified. Are typically what I think of with affordable, but I've seen them take the, take form in either single family neighborhoods or in multifamily. So it's less to me about the housing, like an affordable house or a workforce house could be anything form wise, but, um. There's a, I think the caveat being like it's a, something that it's a part of a program, some kind of income qualified program, but I've seen it. Be any, all kinds of housing products.
Uh, Peter, does this is. Does the multifamily residential. Assume that we do not want. Or, or traditional single family homes in the same area.
Um, I don't think so. I mean, I think this is mostly just classifying where our current multifamily developments are. What, what was that? I thought you heard somebody. I don't think it means that we couldn't also have another housing type. Adjacent to it. Is that what you're asking?
Uh, adjacent to it or part of it? I guess I'm asking the question.
Right now, I mean, going back to a policy, so our zoning would distinguish those uses as not being on the same parcel at least. Now, at some point down in the future, that could, that could change. As you'll notice, one of the categories. And this also talks about. It's a mixed, like a mixed use office, commercial, residential category. That doesn't necessarily disting- distinguish between the type of residential that would be a part of it. It, at least isn't prescriptive about what type of residential they're talking about, whether it's a single family neighborhood. Or if it's a multifamily, something. I don't think having this category, um, prohibits any, anything else. Maybe I'm not understanding.
This, this. This relates specifically to a piece of land and how it would be, how it would be classified. Is that correct?
I don't understa- I'm sorry, Bob, I don't, not following. Is anyone can help me?
So, uh, this, this classification. Translate that to, uh, zoning for me.
It would be one of our multifamily districts. So we've got, what are they called?
RM.
RM, R. I think we just have RM, right?
Yeah. I mean, get some duplexes into our.
RM and then RCLO some types.
Okay, and then describes what is permitted within that area.
Yep.
Okay. That's what I was trying to understand.
Okay.
This does not preclude. Um. The development of other kinds of. Housing within that. Area. Or are you saying?
I mean, I think that's a good general question. A category, just because something's labeled on the future land use map as a certain category. Does not necessarily mean it has to be that land use. We're not, I don't think we're really tying anything up. We may be broadcasting in a broader sense to a developer that this is what the community may want to see here. But the planning commission, the township board, they'll have options to pursue what's in the plan or to deviate and pick something that might be. Either more appropriate or just the world's best project that doesn't match this, but is a great project regardless. So I don't, yeah, it doesn't tie our hands necessarily, but it's an influence in making a decision about rezoning. Or a development proposal. I mean, I think that where. The assumption there is that the people have spoken. They went through this long process. They had a lot of input on a lot of things. And now they've decided this is what they want to see here. In reality, I don't know if it's. You know, I don't know if that's as, uh, true as it probably could or should be.
Peter, I have one comment.
Yeah.
Um, up in the northeast corner there. Where, uh, there's an area of multifamily housing up there. That's a very thickly forested area. Along the river.
Are you talking about the property off of, um?
Off, off of, uh.
Waverly, yeah.
Waverly and Delta River Drive.
Yep. Uh, see, drive where Dave has his icon or his mouse.
Yeah, that area right there, that's. Very heavily forested.
Yep, and there's flood plain and wetlands as well.
Right.
So, yeah, there's a lot of properties on the future landings map that I'm not sure if we're gonna get through tonight. Um. Or even broach that may not be categorized in a way that works. Um, or we may have differing opinions on how it should be categorized. That's the conversation we've got to have. For that particular property, I could see there are potentially some buildable space along Waverly. It's right across the street from. Other multifamily developments that are in the city of Lansing, but there also could be. Potentially some home sites along the river that would take a lot of money to do the engineering and build a road back there. But I could see four or five million dollar home sites along the river as well. So it really kind of could go either way depending on. I guess who, who buys it, who's putting money into it, what they want to see, what their specialty is. And that's one of the challenges. I just went through a long exercise with our engineering and utilities team about trying to forecast. So we went through a study of water sewer modeling, trying to forecast like what development might be. In, and the master plan does look at twenty years, not just ten. Um, what might, these might be in the future, because we're trying to estimate what kind of utility usage they might get in the future. And how we model our system, because that's part of this plan as well, if you remember back to when we talked to kind of broader scope. And that's one of those properties that I like you, because I can see it going either way. It really just depends. Uh, circumstance, so.
I mean, I think that's very expensive property. And I think it would take an awful lot, you know, for a developer, um, to go in there and. And put in multifamily, um, housing in there.
They might, yeah, it might.
I've heard the terrain is so challenging that. Nobody up to this point has been willing to put the money together to do anything with it.
To Peter's point though, um, he's probably correct when he says that. Somebody who has lots of assets is probably, you know, the only. Only kind of people that could go in there, um, because it'd be very expensive to develop.
People build houses on the side of mountains. I personally wouldn't, okay.
Actually clarified that. Yeah, Dave, this is one of eighteen spots on the future landings map that we identified for conversation. And like Peter said, I don't know if we'll be able to get to it tonight, but, um, I wouldn't look at the future landings map like this is. What it's going to be. This is just their first run and, you know, we're here to try to generate con- conversation. And comments from this body to inform the process and make the document that we actually want it to be.
Yeah, that's a really important point. This is all just draft. We've, for coming from, and again, I very much, I have really enjoyed working with our consultant team and have all the respect in the world for them. But they have to give us something to react to and they don't, they don't live here. So they're, they're giving us their best kind of broad strokes. Based on what they're seeing and they've got team, they've got team members in Ohio, they've got team members throughout Michigan. So they're kind of giving it their best look at based on existing land use and utilities, all kinds of other stuff and what they think might happen. But now it's, I think that that's where I'm, the baton has been handed to us. To really start to have these granular conversations about things like David just mentioned, the parcel by parcel review. And then some of the broader policy stuff like this and the vision of, and the vision and objectives. So, yeah, thanks, Dave, for making that. So, okay, uh, back to multifamily. Are we comfortable generally with, with the, the category? It's, it's a classic category. It's in every future landings map in the country, probably. Just meant to generally describe where multiple family uses are. It incorporates just about any kind of. Housing typology you could imagine outside of kind of the suburban or traditional neighborhood. We can always tweak the, the language on this, but. Okay, I'm gonna move on. We'll just try to get through this at least for now. Manufactured homes, this is just meant to, um, capture the, that we do have manufactured home parks. I think we just have the one on Canal, south of the highway or south of West Saginaw, sorry. So since it's here, we would do want to identify it. And I'm gonna keep moving here. The mixed use, so this is another, um, thing that is worth of discussion. So mixed use. There are two categories are mixed use, commercial and office. So the, the consultant is proposing. And I think our team agrees to combine, rather than list out separately office and commercial, to combine that use and just call it. Commercial office mixed use. Um, our team is supportive of doing that. I think it makes a lot of sense. If there is really no, at, at least that jumps out to me, reason to distinguish between the two. They both are commercial activities, office. Uses are commercial activities. They're not retail necessarily. But I mean, it's a pretty broad umbrella that all that stuff falls into and from a land use, kind of always think like, what does the guy walking down the street think? I don't know that he would. I think it's both. I don't know if there's a distinction really, so. It's not residential. It's this. So that's what the, the intent here was, this mixed use, commercial and office. Um, a little bit of a wrinkle to that is the, the, um, proposal for the, the category just below that. Which is commercial, office and residential. So it adds that residential component. So the, any, any area and that, well, there, it's hot pink on the map and we don't need to get into necessarily the map. I. I want to be able to have the, the category conversation without having too much to refer to the map. But this is proposed to have a mix of all of those. So they're saying there are some areas in the community where it makes sense to have. Office, commercial and residential. Potentially. And the way I see this mostly, mostly manifesting is, is there a tired shopping center on West Saginaw? That might need some incentive to be redeveloped and a current owner may not. Want to build another shopping center there, but if we were to say, well, you could have, and again, high level discussions. If you could have, um, if you could add apartment buildings, an apartment building to this or a cluster of condos on the site. Now your profit potential is that much higher and now maybe it is more attractive to potentially redevelop. So that is the idea here is to, that there are some areas that are appropriate to also add residential. I mean, this is kind of the classic infill development. Where there's a big parking lot, maybe that's a good spot for, uh, townhomes or a cluster of. Homes or an apartment building or some other kind of creative take on residential. And in the areas where mixed use is proposed or where commercials proposed, it's mostly along. By Saginaw Highway, our main commercial corridors. Those are probably places that if the community is going to grow or add a residential in whatever form that is. Those would be the areas that are close to services, close to utilities.
Now, Peter, whenever I talk to people. And I bring up the, uh, mixed use, they assume we're talking partial residential.
Yeah.
Right. It's just automatic.
I think that is the distinctive category, um.
That seems that, well, from my, from my just journeys around the area, that seems to be the, where the development is going is, is that mixed with residential. You know, down below first floor is one and apartments above.
So let's go to this last one and then I have a proposal that I'd like to discuss a little bit. So the last, um, on page three. Uh, categories, the last thing is flex corridor. So this talks about flex corridor category, um, key corridor. So they have it along the very eastern side of the township as we move to Waverly. Road and then they have some along Waverly Road. Um, the idea here are smaller lots. Um. Now they talk about, um, I guess they being the consultant, sorry. Um, talks about having retail, um, some housing, office, so really kind of a flexible environment for office, commercial, residential. But then they also add the tech and light manufacturing and distribution. Um, one thing that, and they also talk about creative uses, maker spaces, artists and manufacturing. Um, so I think the, I'll just lay it out. What our team has been talking about internally is. Combining the three of these into one category that addresses both office, commercial and also has a residential factor. We were not seeing really the distinction between flex corridor and mixed. Um, office, commercial, this M U R category. The, and the reason being, so flex quarter talks specifically about some, some specific uses. Um. I, I think we're better to talk about things at a broader scale. Um, so these like missing middle house and like we talked about before, I mean, missing middle housing could be potentially in any zoning district here. It's not necessarily. A distinct land form or building type. And then the slight manufacturing and distribution, I am concerned primarily with the small lot sizes that the flex corridor. Has, I mean, and that is the challenge in general with the, that area of West Saginaw. They're a small lot. I mean, it's a, it's a more rundown area. They're older commercial developments. The real challenge is the shallow lot, so they haven't been. The right, lo- lot of them butt right up to residential neighborhoods. I mean, some are just like the, uh. A and W down here, the sheriff fence. So it's like a drive through restaurant with a guy sleeping twenty feet to the south. So it's, it's, um, th- there's not a lot you can do with those lots, so. From a redevelopment standpoint, they just don't have the same kind of potential. So throwing, um, I, I mean, I appreciate the thought to think differently about these. Um, but throwing the light manufacturing, particularly the distribution, I think, when I think distribution, I think shipping, I think trucks, I think big parking lots. Truck traffic. I don't know if that's the appropriate place for those and we have a large industrial district now. I do want to think bigger about what those parcels could, could be, but I think that's more of a kind of a programming zoning thing than it is necessarily a future land use. Category. So what we had talked about is combining the three of these into one. Now the logic there. Is with, with the removal of that kind of industrial factor with the distribution of light manufacturing. Well, first of all, light manufacturing does fit into some of our commercial uses already. So if you had a light manufacturing operation that didn't require. A big kind of trucking operation, for the most part, you could do those in commercial zoning already. So I think we've kind of addressed that part. Um. In anywhere that commercial and office could be. May or may not be appropriate for residential, but it seems like it might be prudent to at least keep that option for the right kind of project. We can add, we can, in the zone, when we get to zoning language, we can talk more about kind of what that looks like. Maybe residential uses are by special use permit in M U R. And that would give us the, gives the community some controls on what exactly those might be. But it might be, it might be helpful to have all one category that addresses all these that also. Kind of includes that X factor of residential where appropriate. So, and it might not be appropriate everywhere and it's not for everybody in terms of people that live in places like that. Maybe you want to live in the. Let's just pick on a development, a big suburban development like the Lansing Town Center where Target is. They, eh, over time. As some of these businesses, you know, the large parking lot thing may go away in the next twenty years. And they may look at, hey, we don't need that much parking. It's only busy at Christmas. Maybe that's a great spot to plunk down a row of townhomes. Or an apartment building or something like that. And they may take advantage of that kind of thing over time. Uh, the, so the other challenge, I guess the. Uh, the other, so the other challenge, I guess the the counter to that is we need to pick specific places when we get into the mapping exercise. Uh, where it's more appropriate to, if we want to keep them separate, which I mean, again, these are just kind of conversation starters that we may need to um. And we can look at what the consultant has identified uh with the map and where they think it might be appropriate for residential where it might not be. But most of our commercial office is gonna be along Saginaw, Crites. It's pretty um, pretty limited canal. Waverly. So the question is, are there places maybe where residential development might not be appropriate? So that's a map, but that's more of a mapping question. Any initial input on the categories, the commercial, mixed use, flex categories? Any holes in our? Logic on it?
I would combine them all in one.
Can we do that?
I think this is one of those classic cases where what we're dealing with is a distinction without a difference. Uh, they put a different name on it, but you scratch the surface and it's like.
Really?
Yeah.
So we know Chair Kazinsky has to roll onto here at seven. Um, let's cover these last three categories on the last page on page four. So spoilers, we're not proposing any changes to these, but industrial, pretty clear. I mean, our industrial has a very. We have a very successful industrial zoning district and this is just, you know, showing where those areas are. Institutional civic is government owned properties, um, could be things like B W L are owned. Are are more of an institutional civic use colleges, educational institutions. Um, it's a fairly broad, broad net. It also includes things like senior living facilities. And that even that's an argument that you could make whether it's if it's not a public. Um, assisted their senior living, would that just be multifamily versus a civic or institutional use? But that's traditionally how how they're categorized. So we're not proposing changes here and then parks and open spaces pretty self explanatory. It's just properties that are formal parks. Um, open spaces could be other types of areas, like the bird sanctuary is not a township park. But it's a open space, so it would fall into that category.
Golf courses.
What was that?
We don't have any golf courses. Not anymore. You couldn't, right?
Yeah, well, we could in twenty years, it might be.
Peter, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I got confused when I was looking at this because industrial on the. On the definition is a I, but on the the map, the key map. Um, industrial is I N. And you go down to institutional civic, they have that as I N. But they have institutional civic as I C on the key.
Oh, that's a good point. That is confusing. All right, we will fix that.
The other thing that I would say is I ju- I was just looking at this. The key or the land use map from two thousand and thirteen and. On the institutional civic. We're combining schools and churches with the same definition. As the wastewater resource facility and the Board of Water and Light. And in the previous one, um, they were classified as utilities for the W W R F and the B W L. So I just think in terms of character, nature, use, regulations. Um, there's a big difference between. The schools and churches and the W W R F and the Board of Water and Light.
So you would propose breaking out the utilities in their own category like we have them in the old one? In the twenty thirteen plan?
Either that or industrial.
Okay. Any thoughts on that proposal?
So what would the new county detention pan on Saginaw be considered?
I would say either open space or institutional.
I mean, it's owned by the Board of Water and Light, so whatever kind of classification we have.
County, county drain.
Oh, the county drain, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The um, actually the intercounty drain commission.
Right. I could probably dice this up in any number of ways, so I'm I'm open to whatever works best for everybody.
There's some people that like that to be considered a perk eventually.
Take the fence down a little bit.
Put the pathway around it.
Speaking about Mudry Park, is that the one?
Not that one. I have to mow that one. This other one I don't want.
Any other thoughts on the future land use map categories? If you have something you either um, you well, work, this is not the only time we're gonna talk about this, so please, if you have thoughts on this, shoot me a note. Um, if you wanna just, if again, feel free to submit to the portal to if you have other thoughts or some thing then. That you want to get out, uh, that's another way of doing it. Are we ready to move on? So. I guess, you know, we have limited time tonight and I don't wanna keep everyone, so I guess I'm kinda take a poll here. We have the future land use map in the meeting packet. We prepared like eighteen different areas that we would wanna discuss further. Do we wanna have that conversation as a group or do we wanna have that conversation as a steering committee? And then the steering committee brings that con- that results back to the group.
Second.
The second one?
Second one.
Okay. So with this, our support to um, our team will gather, so we have the members that have already volunteered for the steering committee. And what I was thinking, we would come into one of the rooms up here, set the. A little out of date here, I guess we no longer need to set up a projector, push the button on the wall. Plug the laptop in and we can go through those areas kind of piece by piece and have longer discussions about each one of those. The reason I'm I al- I'm supportive of that and it's just hard to have a conversation like that in a big room with a lot of people because what we really need is. We'd like to be able to pull up their photo. We'd like to be able to pull up, you know, maybe the property record to show kind of what's going on in this area and talk. At a bigger, you know, in a bigger, more flexible way about trends and kind of explain some of the logic behind some of our proposals and. So if that works, we can set, we'll schedule that meeting and then we'll be ready for that conversation at the at the future planning commission meeting. Okay.
Yeah, if I if I can make just one general observation, I would just kind of put into people's heads. One thing I noticed throughout all of this that. I think needs to be considered is obviously it's forward looking, you know, for future land use and that kind of stuff. But I think we have to explicitly mention and take into account. The preservation, improvement and potential expansion of what they're calling the conventional and traditional neighborhoods. Uh, to support those neighborhoods, improve them, which could have a beneficial effect on affordability. Uh, on density, uh, more actively promote things like uh ADUs within those neighborhoods. I just think preservation of what we already have. Needs to be in here and it needs to be integrated into the overall. Plan rather than just saying, well, yeah, we got these old neighborhoods, so whatever. That's my personal app.
Houston, it's seven oh four Doug, I don't know if you're watching the clock. No, okay.
Don't still be pouring their coffee.
Alright. So, okay, so that's the way we'll tackle the late, the discussion on the future land use map. And then our team will run through that and we'll bring it back to a regular meeting for kind of a download, I guess, or upload. Let's move on then to the vision and objective statements. So we don't need to spend a ton of time with these tonight, but I wanted to maybe send you home with some homework. To read through these and share any comments you might have, but I'd like to go through them. Um. We're we're already here, we might as well take advantage of the time and the space. So I'm gonna start with the the first page of mobility. Again, these are. Goals and they're called, they call them visions, but essentially goals and objectives. That are intended to be kind of the support for the rest of the plan. So they mark out or they show kind of what. Things that we think are important and then. Deliver some objectives that help us. Make them happen or better articulate what the vision is for that particular category. And I'll just tell you, um, I have sent a call out to the different directors in the township. I've been meeting with them one on one to get some feedback from them on this stuff. Because we don't wanna commit to something that isn't um, you know, feasible or. That um, takes us in kind of in a different direction that we've already been going. And also, you know, considering the source of the consultant, these are things that they're, they don't have kind of the beat on everything the township does. They have a general idea. But some of this stuff is, um, they might not have kind of the inside information that we have, so think of that through the lens. Uh, that through that lens. So for mobile mobility, promote a multimodal transportation system. Each mobile mobility resource, so it's highways, freeways, local roads, sidewalks, trails, transit, functions efficiently, appropriately scaled to its context. And fills its intended role. So it has a series of objectives here, first of which is collaborating with M D O N Eton Eton County Road um Commission. Advocate for road improvements. So that's something we do now. Um, we have a, so lately the township does have a local road millage, right? That's um, do you have a road millage? Thought we did. Uh, that has the sunset on it to improve local streets. And of course, you know, we do work with the county on that and identifying any potential issues that we've got. So I don't think that's anything new. Well, I'll just roll through these and please stop me along the way. So coordinate with regional transit providers to improve service coverage, integration. Transit service locations of the planned developments. The elephant in the room on this is the millage that's pending in November. So um, I don't know that Route Three won't continue to operate in the way that it always has after if the millage does fail. Then um, Route Three is still here, runs to the Lansing Mall and turns around and goes home. If the extended Route Three stays or is enhanced in whatever form that looks like, whether it stays on the same route or they. They have, there's another route. Um, that obviously changes things a little bit differently. So we are, we already have some services here, so E-Trans here, CADA is here. I guess we just don't know the scale at which those may be operated in the future.
But in the context of a long range plan, we should have that, yes, one of our objectives, right?
I I think so. I mean, I think that in general, most big communities have some sort of public transportation. There are people that. Don't drive, can't drive, can't afford to drive, are physically disabled, whatever that means.
Yeah.
Um, so it's gonna be here, so I mean, I think we ought to plan for that. This is not speaking to dollars or. Um, when or or timeframe. Close connectivity gaps in our existing non-motorized systems, so this is anywhere and now this says as part of the capital improvements. Program, that is not really how that works, so I already in a different draft had eliminated the C I P reference. But closing connectivity gaps and not motorized, so that's could be areas where our bike, our bicycle infrastructure is needs a connection. Or even our sidewalk pathway system where there's a gap there. So we do that regularly as part of just our normal operating. Work. Promote bikeable, walkable, bikeable communities through design and land use policies. Some of these, I'm not sure what the what the what is, like what's the action? So we try to make, we require sidewalks in new developments. We require connections. Those sidewalks connect to. An adjacent sidewalk, for example, one that runs along a major road. Um, and then we require that new developments construct pathways in front of their developments to connect to others. So we are, we are doing those things right now. That those are policies that are in our our code of ordinances. Doc design standards promote drive and park ones outcome. This is way more, this is a lot, this is challenging in a suburban environment. So I mean, you can go to a shopping center and go to multiple stores, but I don't think it's really the same as. I went to Ann Arbor, I parked in the ramp and I walked around for two hours. That would definitely a different world there. So um, I mean, I think it's something to strive for, but I don't necessarily know that it's um. I I don't know right now what the design standards would be that would make that happen. They would be um, let's say restrictive in a in a different, I won't say a bad way, but they would, it's a totally different policy environment. Uh, that that forces that issue.
Peter, I have to. Comments, maybe it's a question. I try to put a. A template regarding persons with disabilities on the plan. So look at the mobility one. And maybe you can tell me based on what. Your understanding is. Is that the notion in the initial statement. About accessibility intended to accommodate some of that.
I don't think it goes far enough to 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 address it. I could see that being its own bullet under objectives. It speaks specifically to ensuring that accessibility is a is a priority. And we don't have to write these tonight, but at least we know generally what we want it to be. Um, does anyone else agree with that to add a new bullet about accessibility?
As I see the, the one where it says promote walkable and bikeable communities. Those. Those statements tend to apply to. People who are not mobility limited.
Okay, no, thanks. Good point. Any other comments on mobility? If you do have them, I'll keep referencing this online activity. So these are also on the. The web link I sent you earlier, so if you think of anything later, you can throw it in there. So I'm gonna keep rolling just out of respect for everybody's time here. The next one is community identity. So this proposes um several different things. So the overall mission there noting our foster vibrant and inclusive community, identify. Our identity, so it's all about community, they reflex our shared values, aids in attracting, retaining residents and businesses and celebrates our unique character. Um, okay, so some of the objectives, so conduct a community branding and marketing exercise. The township has done that, ag- agree or disagree with it, what the what the outcome is. We do have a brand that's been around now for several years. So I don't know, I can tell you, I went through it in Meridian Township. It was an expensive, long ordeal. To get a new logo, and I don't wanna sound pessimistic, I apologize, but to get a new logo or like. Color scheme or font that everybody uses. Um, I I don't know that we, I mean, maybe in twenty years from now, we may wanna do that, but I don't wanna do it anytime soon. Um, does anyone feel strongly about a branding, marketing exercise? At this point, I think there's a way, there are things below that, so like craft the township story. You know, unique character. How unique we are sometimes, but a marketing strategy that identifies promotes the community, I mean, I think just generally promoting the community, promoting. Township businesses help tell the story of our township businesses. Because we have a lot of really interesting stories just in our industrial district. We have companies that operate. You know, provide pieces of something that operate all over the world. So helping to shed light on that, help them tell their story, promote them, I think is a is a big part of this.
My my only comment is. I have two comments. One, I agree with you, spend a lot of money to do that. Doesn't really make any difference once you got a new one, but um. Sometimes the process is as important as the product. So that the community rebranding process may do well for some of the things you're trying to achieve.
Yeah.
More so than.
Could this be changed to something more just like um review and um basically just reviewing the branding that we have? And look for opportunities to enhance it. Something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think back to when they started the whole I am Delta thing. You know, there are elements that are just inherent to the system that make it difficult. You know, there are elements that are just inherent to the system that make it difficult. Uh, I mean, back then, we did kind of an informal community survey and said, okay, go out on the street and ask people. You know, where do you live? And if they go to the Waverly schools, they typically said they were in Lansing. If they went to the Grand ledge schools, they said they were in Grand ledge. Very few of them said they were in Delta Township. Well, we can't do anything.
But they just say Waverly.
You know, that's what they identify with. It's where their property taxes go, their school taxes go. It's it's an error. I mean, we're in kind of a never never land between those places and.
Just to emphasize what you said, um. One of our kids is looking for a home in this area. And the realtor breaks down, you know, the homes and different areas and all that. They don't have a breakout for Delta Township.
Right.
They have a breakout for homes in Grand ledge and homes in Lansing. And they don't have anything for us. And I think we have our own post office. And I know this is beyond. You know, what the planning commission can do, but in terms of branding, we have our own post office. We ought to have our own zip code. And then people would be getting mail to Delta Township and they would, you know, be putting their address on everything. Delta Township. And I think that simple measure would do way more than spending a lot of money, you know. On uh color schemes and lettering and all that kind of stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm not gonna hold my breath on that one. We couldn't convince them that we don't need to send our mail to Grand Rapids to have it delivered across the street.
So all right, we'll keep moving through this. So I'm not sure what the maybe second big bullet point is about shape public and commercial spaces that become integral. To Delta Township's identity. I mean, I think my takeaway from that is to have some public spaces. When we don't have much here, that is one of the challenges of being in suburbia, especially along a a motor corridor, highway corridor. So I mean, I think it's a good goal to have is to have some kind of centralized public space, whatever form that takes. So continue to build on our communication channels. I think that's a given. We're gonna keep doing that in events. Um, opportunity to buy local events. Th- this is a little harder. I mean, I think what the parks, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think what the parks have done for things like community, um, they just do like mom to mom sales and community. Yard sales, garage sales. I think that's like the hyper locals where townships and small communities thrive rather than buy local, buy Amazon. I mean, it's hard to, hard to kind of rally behind that. Yes, we have the plant here. I don't know if, I don't know if we all collectively. Emotionally own Amazon in the same way we do as uh the Willow down here. Um, in design, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut anybody off. Um, implement design standards that foster safer communities. So this is that like commit, uh, they call it criminal prevention through environmental design. I would say this is more of a zoning thing and less of a master plan thing. It's um, I I it's worth striving for. To have uh just uh physical elements that make the community safer, but I definitely where it really hits the road is is in zoning. And so then take steps to make Delta Township more livable for people of all ages. I'm not sure. Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't know. I think the explore grant funding is an orphan from something else. Is there anything that's missing here on community identity? It's probably my biggest question.
Peter, I think the last bullet came from, we had discussions and meetings about attracting younger people to live in Delta. And work in Delta, if I recall correctly.
Okay. Well, maybe it's more attractive is the key word that seems to be missing there.
It could.
Instead of livable. Need to be younger and hipper. I don't know what that means. Nightclubs? What do young people do these days?
Have more kids.
Yeah, must have more kids. All right, uh, housing. So this is pretty broad, speaking pretty broad about housing. Um, as the chair mentioned before he left, I mean, the focus is on our existing neighborhoods and continuing to support those. But the objectives they outlined to run through them here, increase awareness, the supportive programs, the support aging in place. One thing that I had mentioned to our team now, so they talk about home maintenance and accessibility program improvements. So if you remember earlier this year, the town and actively, the township participated in the chill grant through Mishna. That um granted some dollars to provide code related upgrades in people's homes. So that's, I mean, specifically coordinated. So your furnace, that kind of thing, if they were, they provided some gap financing. For people to make improvements. Um, I was kind of thinking broader than that, more policy related things like requiring. Um, in some multifamily developments or maybe age restricted developments, requiring design elements. That allow people to stay in their homes longer, like zero entry doors or certain type of doorknobs. Uh, zero entry showers, that kind of thing. Then there's a whole, I'm, I'm not doing it justice, but there's a whole category of those kind of designs. That if they're implemented into projects, there are more, people are more likely to want to stay longer or more able to stay longer. So I could see an avenue to add that here.
Those also address people with disabilities.
As I can tell you, developers don't volunteer to build that kind of stuff. I mean, there might be the boutique folks out there that do. I haven't met them yet. So and that's the kind of thing that if you want it, you gotta, you gotta codify it and get it in your ordinance. Increase the overall supply of housing to meet current projected demand. Um, I I demand is the the hard part depending on what what uh project you're looking at. Uh, there may not be as many people in Michigan in the next thirty years. Promote housing density in appropriate areas through zoning ordinance amendments. We have um kind of in a broader scale, you know, part of what we're doing with this is also looking at waters, uh, utility use, utility. Capacity. And that's gonna tell us, are there areas where um increased density might be appropriate? So we we have yet to learn that yet, then so that that information is still pending. Um, overall housing supply, you know, just basically building more home or having more homes. Now we do have areas that are. Available for more homes. The density question, we, right now, we allow a pretty low comparative density. So. What can we get? Max of fifteen with a P U D? So that's pretty low on the overall scale of density. I have always kind of shied away from using dwelling units per acre as a figure that um is a good descriptor for residential density. It just doesn't mean something to a lot of people. I know it doesn't resonate with me very well. It's more whether, you know, does it, can the traffic studies say that the road network can support it? Um, is it easily accessible in an, you know, ingress egress? Does kind of the project work rather than does it meet some specific number criteria? So um. That, so streamline permitting and approval process, I would say right now, I'd like to remove this one. It's not that I don't want to improve. I mean, I would say reduce or eliminate the word streamline and just maybe say improve, review and improve. I always feel like there is kind of a misnomer that you can streamline. There is no streamlining. Everybody is part of the same process. We're not able to say, well, if you pay a thousand dollars more, you go first. We don't have that backlog, frankly. But also, I I feel like that um offers something that we really can't deliver on. We move as quickly as we can in any scenario. So I would say at least, you know, maybe review development process to ensure that it works as efficiently as possible. Partner with service providers to address housing insecurity and ramp around services. I would say instead of partner would just maybe be consult. So there are people that do housing way better than our township staff will ever will. They know. The issues that are going on in communities, they know where services are needed and they provide those services. The township doesn't provide those services. So just knowing who they are, knowing who to connect people to, I think is probably the biggest thing that we can do. Good, good for people.
Um, we use plain English for housing insecurity. I'm not quite sure what that means. Yeah, but what does it mean?
Almost. It could be people struggling with rent. I think it's it's intended to kind of be that whole spectrum. People that don't have homes, people that struggle meeting their rent. Okay, um, increase non-motorized connections from neighborhoods, community resources. We talked a little bit about this under the mobility thing. I think it's fine. Uh, then encourage a mix of housing types, so single family, multi, just all of them. Um, and split in areas to accommodate diverse housing sizes and incomes. I think personally in general, I think of, sometimes I think a land use planning is SimCity. You want to have a diverse types of housing. It's a. The there's, we talked about this at the housing forum too. There are so many different types of people that live in any community. So one thing might not work for the next person. So you want to have a broad. Kind of a broad take on that. For the most part, I feel that developers kind of know the market and are able to build to that. So we aren't encouraging one specific type over another necessarily.
Is that last? Bullet incomplete sentence.
Yeah, oh yeah, there's a orphan there. Yeah, we'll talk to her.
How do you um, a word is the issue of um. Housing. Like designs and et cetera to address future needs. What is that? Is that?
I was thinking we could rearrange the first bullet point to incorporate something about design elements. Cause that talks about the home maintenance, accessibility improvements. We could also add design to that. Or it could be its own.
So say that again.
I was thinking the first bullet point under housing speaks to, if you're, if you're talking about what I was mentioning earlier about design elements. That could support aging in place. So those zero entry tubs or door frames or however we wanna.
I was talking about.
What's that?
That's not what I.
Okay, where were you?
I wasn't clear. So um, let me give an example. Solar energy. Is an expanding interest uh in some housing sites. And and I, my point was that the township should be proactive in looking at. Developments that address. Future expansions, improvements, opportunities.
Peter, are we gonna mention tiny homes at all?
That we could, or we could fit it into that last bullet type of just a mix of housing types. We could mention specifically large, larger lots, smaller lots.
I just wondered, you know, do we have an opinion?
I don't know what anybody else thinks. We have the cottage housing ordinance right now that allows for smaller lots, smaller setbacks. Really kind of depends, tiny houses mean so many different things to different people. The, if it's just kind of purely more of a cottage style, just smaller lots. I think that that fits in here, but we can, we can call it out to talk about scale.
What's the distinction between cottage and tiny?
Terminality.
Terminality, yeah. It doesn't, I don't know that there is necessarily.
More letters than you.
Some people say tiny homes and it refers to something on wheels.
Or maybe not connected to public utilities and not on a foundation.
Okay.
You can sell it for more if you call it a cottage.
Yeah, the cottage.
Cottages are actual little houses.
Yeah, the cottage ordinance would be a neighborhood just much tighter, essentially smaller homes.
Higher foundation.
Yeah. Any big issues with housing? Um, so we could add something about the opportunities for solar or other um. Energy systems. Our ordinance does, our zoning ordinance does allow for that, but we can add that in here.
Peter, I don't know how you tie this in, but um. Housing is probably the the greatest um generator of tax revenue for Delta Township. And, you know, in these ti- in these challenging times in terms of um tax revenue. That the township is is facing right now. The type of property, the type of housing is also related to how much revenue you can raise. So I don't know how you, how you tie that in, but I can't think of housing in a vacuum without thinking about revenue.
So you have any thoughts on how that would be in this?
I don't know.
There's a note.
I mean, are you basically saying bigger is better in terms of finances?
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, every time um a house turns over, a house is sold. Um, it's reassessed.
Correct.
And then, you know, you get more, get more revenue. So. And in terms of property taxes, um, that's, that's uh, I think the main bucket. That the revenue comes from that supports the township.
I'd say most of our taxes probably come from our industrial sector and or multifamily housing. Um, you know, I would probably argue that. Collectively, the houses and the names subdivisions that we talked to, you know, the older subdivisions on the south side of West Saginaw. Uh, because you have more units per acre, you're getting more tax dollars than a conventional subset where I live. Willow and 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 Crete. Is that what you're referring to?
I'm just, you know, I've thought about, you know, the public safety um assessment. And and the other things like that. And, you know, my neighbors are, you know, talking about all that kind of stuff. And uh, and so I've become, you know, more aware that, that, you know, tax revenue is. Is in many measures, um, it's tied to, it's tied to housing. And um.
We haven't, and we haven't added a whole lot of housing to the township for a while, have we?
Right.
Haven't we, haven't we kind of plateaued for a few double years?
Generally speaking, the single family housing market in Delta is is very even.
Yeah, so the only increase is through this sale and.
Right, and we also, particularly on the east side of Delta Township. Um, I know a lot of people that are aging in place there.
Yeah.
And they've owned the same property for forty years. And and they have no intention of. Of ever, you know, moving out. So, you know, it would have to be kind of new construction. Or or places where um people have, you know, more um job or economic. Mobility, you know, changing jobs, moving out of the area, this kind of thing. But every time a house turns over. The the township gets more revenue.
Reassessed, yeah.
I just wanted to mention, since we're just about ready to leave housing. Okay, I've been a big proponent of land banking. And I thought a good idea would be when the residential houses behind the small lots. On the Saginaw corridor came up for sale, that the township would buy those houses and land bank it. And when the opportunity comes, the commercial property has a chance to expand into a bigger lot.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought that was a really good idea. Okay. Somebody pointed out to me that, okay, since we're in a housing crisis. What I'm doing is I'm taking houses away from the community. I'm making commercial property better, better opportunities, but I'm kind of crashing the housing. And I can see that, you know. But I think uh land banking does have place.
Any other thoughts on housing before we move on?
I'm not sure if this is the right place to state this, but in terms of objective number one. Uh, to support aging in place, AARP has done a ton of studies on this. And they offer courses to the more mature residents. On what they need to do to their homes to stay in your homes. So I don't know if that would be of any benefit to you.
Maybe some kind of educational component or at least a referral to to programs like that.
Yes, they have handouts on what you need to do to your restroom encounters. Where microwaves ought to be placed, et cetera, but they have a huge program and they actually did. Walkability studies where they have volunteers go out and walk neighborhood to see what needs to be done, like to curves. But they've done a lot of work.
Okay. I just made a note under that first bullet point. Okay, I don't know about anybody else, I'm starting to get cold, I really must shut the heat down at the end of the day here, I don't know. Uh, we'll move on to economic prosperity. So pretty gen- pretty general sustain and grow vibrant and resilient local economy. Strategic revitalization, underutilized commercial areas, support for small businesses, opportunities for new community gathering spaces. So the objectives under that are actively engaged with groups like LEAP, Home Builders Association, other organizations. Promote regional economic development, we do that, we're a member of LEAP. So I don't think there's anything groundbreaking there. Develop a strategy to promote. Um, and I don't mean that as flip a comment, by the way, I'm just trying to move us along, I'm not trying to say. That I don't support those organizations or think this is not valuable. Uh, develop a strategy to promote commercial occupancy of vacant properties or redevelopment of underutilized properties. Um, especially within the last two primary focus areas of the plan. So, sometimes these areas have been done to promote redevelopment, that's why I made those comments about residential earlier. There's only so many things we can really do, um, either regulate them to death and they move on or. Provide a pot flexible policy environment that they could do more than they currently can do. Um, so this like campaign will highlight local business stories, I think that's a go, I mean, that's, we talked about that earlier. Update our master sewer water, sewer master plan, uh, support redevelopment goals, we are actively updating that plan. Right now, duct, um, enable zoning ordinance amendments, including relations of a flex district, we talked about the flex district earlier. So basically that's just saying allow, you know, residential and commercial areas. Support the development of this small business incubators, um, I, I personally think this is problematic. Township does not have a big inventory of public spaces. We have the room, the building that we're in right now, we have the community center, we have the facility on Willow. Um, we are particularly well equipped to run a business incubation program. And not to mention, there are a lot of places that do that very well already, I don't know that we need to provide a local, a shadowy local version of the same. So, um, I mean personally, I'd probably just nix that, I think we can support that environment and be engaged in that environment in general. But I'm not sure that we're really set up to do that on our own right now.
I think that's what the Chamber of Commerce um, is set up to do.
They are, yeah. And groups like LEAP already do that, play, their downtown Lansing does that. So I think we should just support people doing a great job already. Recognize and communicate the benefits of redevelopment, this is one, this is kind of a mouthful, recognize and communicate the benefits of redevelopment proposals. I'm gonna stop reading from there because I think that's the gist of what they're trying to say here. Uh, so, uh, we'll reword that to just, um. You know, that is the challenge is how do you, I mean, it's back to, I think, this other bullet point about how do you incentivize redevelopment? How do you get a company in Florida to invest money into a shopping center that's fifty years old in West Lansing? That, I mean, if you can crack that code, well, we could, we can all move on, I think. Getting the resident, getting the uh, development business.
In Delta Township.
Right. So I think there's probably a generic statement, we can kind of rephrase that. Any other issues of economic prosperity?
No, so Peter, you're taking out the. Support the development of small business.
Well, I, I was thinking of rephrasing that to speak more about supporting kind of a small business environment and. Some of the other players in the area.
I agree.
I, we've got from the smallest to the biggest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, last one, environmental sustainability. So, um, keep in mind township does not have a wetland ordinance, uh, Eagle, you know, former D Q, former probably something else. Uh, runs pretty much, you know, any, any envi- any properties with environmental sensitivities would need permits from Eagle. For wetlands, for floodplain, and a lot of these things are handled kind of outside of the township level. That, that being said, it's still an important component and it rang up quite a bit. We're not seeing right now the summary of the public input stuff, but, cause we don't have it fully. But environmental sustainability at the first ma- at the first master plan open house received a lot of votes. So let's run through the objectives here. I mean, the, well, the overall statement is um, commitment to environmental sustainability, preservation of open spaces. Uh, protecting natural resources, promote responsible land use. And retain rural character. So objective, protect groundwater quality and availability, implementing land use policies, infrastructure practices, community education that prevent contamination. Reduce overuse, ensure long time, long term sustainability, I think the education component is something that we can strive towards. Um, I, right now, in our land use policies are gonna be, you know, should a project, project A go in a particular location.
I don't see how we're, we're, we're doing that objective, I mean. We buy all of our water from the Board of Water and Light, correct?
Yes.
Well, we supply a bunch of it too. I mean, they're, they're tapped into our wells as well.
Yeah.
Do we still have wells?
No, we don't have.
All the wells have been capped.
Yeah, just in the last year.
Oh, okay, I thought we still were running them.
No, but I wish we did because. Protecting groundwater, you have to have a way to monitor the groundwater, and now that all the wells are capped.
Yeah.
We don't have a way to monitor the groundwater, we have thousands of residents who are on wells.
We do.
And we have a large industrial sector.
We do.
And part of that, I don't know how active they are in that endeavor is the, the health department, but. That they are, they are mostly are gonna handle any issues with wells. Okay, uh, second one, continue actively participating in the groundwater management board. I mean, we, we, we won't be stopping that. Explore opportunities to strengthen sustainability provisions in the zoning ordinance, um, you know, I, I think this is written broadly enough that I don't. Have an issue with including it, it's just what does that exactly mean? Consider parks and rec ma- master plan goals um, for review. I mean, I think what this is ultimately saying is i- identify and take advantage of opportunities as they arise. To include elements that might be in the master rec- master plan, for example. A pocket park in a new residential development or an op- opportunity to connect a trail to an existing trail or develop a new trail. That kind of thing when private development opportunities arise. Then last one is protecting the Grand River and other surface water from pollution, you know, we don't have a really large role on that outside of the development process. So. I didn't think there's anything big that we needed to change here, other, we can reword that first one to speak more to education or to emphasize that. Any other issues of environmental sustainability? Okay, so there's still a lot to get through, I mean, this is the first um, look at some of these, I'm sorry this took so long. But there's a lot to get through, I wanted to get this on everybody's radar. What we'll do is we'll schedule a meeting with the steering committee, I'll shoot the whole group and anyone that's available that wants to come and, and, and meet with us is, is welcome. Uh, to have the broader discussion about land use categories. And look at, kind of, kind of a granular parcel by parcel level as we dig further into the future land use map.
Do you want to have a question please?
Yeah.
When does, um. In terms of housing. Certain cultures, they have multi-generational staying in their home. Where does that fall to the master plan, cause I know this on Willow, you have quite a bit of that now. Where on, way really, it's true now that it's right on Willow. There are a lot of people in some of those houses, some of those, you know, I counted ten cars one time in one. Just east of Elmwood. And then over by Saint Gerard. Within the last few months, there have been homes that have quite a number of people, I think it's a cultural thing.
Sure.
So is that something the township needs to deal with, not saying that it's wrong, I just wonder if it's something.
Well, there's gonna be limits, uh, the building code is gonna speak to like how many people can be in a structure. And live, so abandoned, it's like turning basement into a living space that doesn't have egress windows is probably the first example I think of. And then, no, no parking in the street, where are you saying we, are you proposing that we have some kind of limit on that?
No, 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 I'm just wondering if that comes into play to have a, what appears to be. A single family residential home that has a family of multi-generations living in it. Thus, a number of cars as well.
Yeah.
Parking on the lawns and whatnot, cause there's not enough room in the driveway.
I think we can deal with those with our current provisions in place, if it's something that we want to better support that kind of thing, we have some stuff in housing about. Uh, wherever it might be, about, um. Potentially looking at accessory dwelling units to provide places for more opportunities for that kind of thing. But again, that comes with the same issues that you're, you're talking about, more cars, more people around.
And I'm not saying that it's wrong, you know, I kind of think it's nice because remember used to be. Grandma lived across the street, auntie was next door. Um, somebody else was around the corner and now everybody's all through the country, so.
Yeah.
I commend them for keeping their families together like that.
Yeah, they use probably the biggest kind of first thing I think of when I think of a, a, a better way for multi-generations. Now not to be illegally in, you know, in a home overflowing necessarily, but of how to incentivize that a little bit. And right now, we only allow the detached accessory buildings in some areas.
Thank you.
Anything else on this stuff right now? Well, we'll get that meeting sent out of the future land use map. Uh, we'll continue to vet the, um, uh, the goals and objectives, I'll, I'll, once I get done with the township team. I'll bring this back on like revised ver- version, um, we'll put some more work into the future land use categories and bring that back to you. Anything else for today?
I do have a question about the Lansing Mall.
Yeah.
Someone told me that they're going to redevelop that to be like, um, Frandor, do you know anything about that?
I think that is a rumor. Yeah, no, I just met with mall ownership very recently, they don't, um. They don't have any plan, specific plans for anything.
No water park.
No, no water park, I mean, I think they're just trying to keep the, keep the lights on and.
Now, the, the people who own the mall own the Best Buy.
No, that's a separate owner, yeah, so the people that own the Best Buy that is now vacant. Um, they're looking for a tenant, the challenge being, I guess, sixty thousand square foot building, that's a big space. So they're struggling with how to, how to fill it. Yeah, you can make a profitable one.
And with the indoor water park.
Yeah.
So Peter, what about?
What's that?
What about the Markford Farm property?
So yeah, Markford Farm property, there's a, been a lot of community rumors about that site, I mean, uh. We had a, if you're looking back to August with the housing forum, there is a developer that has looked at that site, they've not proposed anything. Um, they, but we, yeah, I don't have any proposals, anything on the table right now. But there's a lot of, a lot of hot gossip about what it could be, but the, the only thing I know for certain is the, the Crimson was in the room at that housing forum. Back in August, and I know that they had to talk to, so auto owners owns that whole big piece, auto insurance. So, um, I know that they have looked at that site as a potential site, but I don't have anything official and. No proposals on our, on our desk.
Actually, at one time, Shaheen Chevrolet looked at that property for dealership, before they moved out on the south side.
Mm-hmm.
And then it was the G M or K M, I have people that told them they had to build on the site that they're on. He's got a big education on that. All right, any other comments or conclusions? Management team, anything you would like to add?
Nothing for us today, no.
Right, and, um, just so I'm clear, I was not saying people should not comment, sometimes it's just helpful. Especially for the person who's taking the minutes, if you submit questions, concerns in advance.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
Person that's doing this.
Yep.
Okay, if there's nothing else to come before. Grab the gavel.
No, you don't, you don't have to. Your shoes.
There's all the opposed. We are adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.